Everyone, and welcome to the Knights Abingdon Town Council Meeting, Monday, August the 11th. Um, please note if there's, if there will be, please note, there will be an opportunity during the meeting for citizens to address the town council. When the mayor, I, declares the public comment open, we request that anyone addressing the council sign up, approach the podium when called. State your first and last name and provide your complete mailing address. Kim, if you'll please call roll.
Mr. Webb.
Aye.
Ms. Quetch.
Here.
Ms. Pillion.
Here.
Mary Anderson.
Here.
Let the record reflect that Vice Mayor Austin is absent.
So just a blanket, yeah?
Now, if everyone will please stand, we'll go with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, I'm going to call, uh, Mr. Steven Bedner forward. If everyone will please rise again for the prayer.
Guess it's been a minute since I've done this, haven't stood before. Well, let's pray. Our Father, we thank you for another wonderful day, the life and breath that you provide to us to live, to move, to have our being. Lord, help us to recognize that you are the one who sustains us, that you have created us and that you are still with us. Help us to, to know that. And as we have gathered here together, um, tonight, I pray that you would be with these leaders in this community. That these council members and the staff that are here, that you would continue to bless them so that they can be a blessing to the town. I thank you for the ways in which they have served for years in the past and that you would continue to give them the strength to do so moving forward. Help them, Lord, I pray, to be at peace with one another and to do what is best for this town and not just for the good of an individual. Thank you for the camaraderie and, um, and the peace that they have been able to have for several years now. And that we've been able to reap the benefits of that. I pray that, um, that attitude of working together. And of seeing, uh, the common good, that that would continue. Lord, we thank you for how you have provided for us, not just with these fine leaders in this town, but, uh, for the way that you have provided for us spiritually as well. Thank you for the many pastors and houses of worship that, um, are here and that, uh, represent the diversity of your body of believers. I thank you that you have provided for us in your son, Jesus Christ, and that he gave his life so that we could have life eternal. So help us to recognize each and every day that who we are and what we have is due to who he is and what he has done for us. Lord, even tonight, I pray that, uh, as there's discussion and, um, they hear of reports from community members and things that are happening around town, that, uh, all that happens here tonight would be pleasing and acceptable to you. We pray in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Now, we're going to go to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion by anyone on the town council to make improvement for the agenda for tonight?
So moved.
I will just let the record reflect, I was not here on the July 24th meeting, so I'll have to recr-.
Okay, this is just for tonight.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just, just for tonight. Um, do I have a motion to, for the agenda for tonight?
And then I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Kim, if you'll please call roll.
Mr. Webb.
Aye.
Ms. Quetch.
Aye.
Ms. Pillion.
Aye.
And, uh, Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Now, we're going to have the approval of minutes from the July the 7th, July the 24th, and July the 24th Town Hall Meeting. And I think that we need to maybe do these individually because I wasn't present for the meeting on the 7th. But I was here for the 24th, um, regular Town Council Meeting and the 24th Town Hall Meeting. And I think Councilman Derek Webb was absent for.
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth. So if we could do those by, by dates. So we'll go the approval of the minutes for the July the 7th, 2025 first.
I'll move to approve those minutes. Second.
Any further discussion? Kim, if you'll please call roll.
Mr. Webb.
Aye.
Ms. Quetch.
Aye.
Ms. Pillion.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
I was abstained because I wasn't here for that meeting. Now, do we have approval for the meetings for July the 24th, 2025?
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
No further discussion? Kim, if you'll please call roll.
Mr. Webb.
Abstained.
Ms. Quetch.
Aye.
Ms. Pillion.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Now, we'll go to the July the 24th, 2025 Town Hall Meeting. Approval of minutes on that? If I have someone that can make a motion on that?
I'll move to approve those minutes. Second.
Any further discussion? Kim, if you'll please call roll.
Mr. Webb.
Abstained.
Ms. Quetch.
Aye.
Ms. Pillion.
Aye.
And Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Now, we're going to open the floor for public comments. It looks like I have one person signed up for public comments. Mr. Greg Lilly, if you'll please come forward and state your first and last name and your mailing address, please.
Thank you. It's Greg Lilly. I'm at 244 East Valley Street, Abingdon, Virginia 24210. The Virginia Highlands Festival wrapped up on Sunday, August the 3rd. And from their reporting, over 4,000 people attended those events. Um, and it was 10 days showcasing our town and our region and our creativity. Um, I have to say, I've never seen an organic organization that's so well done, uh, with anything this big. Um, it was created by a team of over 100 volunteers. So, you know, I publicly want to congratulate Dee Dee Cole, um, Shanna Carrico, Ben Jennings, um, Ryan Henderson, Mary Jennings, Nancy Hart. There's just so many people to thank for a wonderful job they did. Um, plus, if, from the Highlander, if you look at these two pages, we had businesses, organizations, individuals that gave their time and resources to make this happen. And again, it's just, it's nothing I have ever experienced before. Um, I've been trying to help out since I got here, back here in 2018. Um, so I just think, uh, the citizens publicly want to state their appreciation for everything the festival has done. Um, and I think the festival team should be commended for a wonderful series of events. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Greg Lilly. And thank you for, for coming today to, to share that because, um, the council is really proud, proud with what went on with Virginia Highlands Festival as well. And to all those who helped donate their time and their effort to make that a success for us. And thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Lilly. I don't have anyone else signed up for public comments, so I guess we will, we'll close the public comments. And we'll now move on to proclamations, which we have no proclamations. Um, I don't think we have anyone signed up for public hearing today. So that will move us on to, we have no resolutions today. Today's going to be a quick one. We don't really have a whole lot, school's going on and nobody's really out and about today. So we have no resolutions, no first reading of ordinance, no second reading of ordinance, no consideration of bids, but we do have new business to discuss today. And, um, the first is going to be of the banner display permit for the William King Arts Mistletoe Market Event on November the 7th through the 9th, 2025. And Mike Cochran is here, here to tell us about that one.
Yes, uh, as you recall, when we redid the, uh, the banner polls, uh, one of the conditions was that new things that weren't specifically delineated in the budget. Because they were new, uh, and that's, in this case, this one, I knew we brought to council for approval. Uh, and in this one, it's the, uh, museum and they're wanting to put up one, uh, for, for their event. And Mistletoe Market, it's a longstanding thing, but they never had a banner before. So this is just, uh, to help get the word out. And I really do think that, um, people see it, uh, and it does help get the word out. So, uh, if anything we can do to help them out, that would be great.
I think that that's a wonderful idea as well, too. Um, I don't know what the rest of the council thinks about that, but, uh, I think it's a good way to get the word out there about that. So as long as they meet all the criteria and everything for that, I think this would be a wonderful idea for them to get the permit for the, uh.
Even got Santa on it.
Yes, sir.
There you go.
Yes, sir.
Uh, yes.
I'll move to approve that banner.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Kim, if you'll please call roll.
Mr. Webb.
Aye.
Ms. Quetch.
Aye.
Ms. Pillion.
Aye.
And Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Next on the agenda for new business, we have an update from the farmer's market. Mr. David would come forward, please.
Hi, I'm Dave McQuist, the manager of the Abingdon Farmers Market. I believe Kim gave you the handout that I brought. So I just wanted to give you as an update of what's going on so far this year. So our Tuesday kids program, as you can see, the numbers there. Last year, we had 429 kids, each getting $10. This year, we had 1,033.
Oh, wow.
We had a line all the way out the side, to the sidewalk and down on most of those Tuesdays. It's just overwhelming to grant how much that worked out. Um, Holson Medical Group gave us $4,000 to do that. We went through that in four weeks. They gave us another $4,000. And then, and then we did a fundraiser at our Farm to Table Dinner. And some private donations came in. And it got us through two weeks shy of where we were shooting for, but school was starting, so it slowed down. But, um, great program. Kids had a lot of enthusiastic about buying fresh produce and learning how to handle money. And you'll also see there's a fresh box flyer that Andrea Wong put together. And on the second page, I guess it's the third page, there's some vendor voices. There's some comments from a couple of the vendors of what they, what they were experiencing with the kids. Great program. Looking forward to doing it again next year. Um, and who knows where it'll go. So the next, next thing on my, my agenda is, um, the EBT matching funds. Um, we deal with Virginia Fresh Match out of Roanoke. And they have a grant and they, um, awarded us $18,000 to match EBT tokens. So we're currently matching up to $100, um, each time some, somebody comes to the market. So far this year, we've, we've redeemed $9,614. And that is up from 70 to 50 last year, this same timeframe. So, um, it's going well. A lot of people have told me they wouldn't have meat in their freezer if it wasn't for this program. So hopefully, we have secured some additional funding for that, um, through Wellspring. So hopefully, we'll be able to keep that going. Um, so between the two of them, so far this year, um, we have given, given out over, around $20,000 to help with food insecurity in the area. And, you know, it really, I've had people come and cry when I hand them the extra tokens. They don't believe that they're going to run their card for 100 and get 200. So they, they have literally cried. Um, uh, let's see. So the next is market traffic. So we're still, we're still have, seeing between 1,000 and 1,200 customers. The last three weeks, I think it's been a little bit over that, between the Highlands Festival and even this last weekend, this last Saturday, we was slammed. It was just straight out. Tuesday afternoons are still running a little slower. A lot of people like that. They don't like the big crowds. They like to come on Tuesday. Our vendor counts, on Tuesday, last year, we were running about 20 vendors. We're running 30 to 35 vendors on Tuesday now. Saturday, we're running 55 to 60. We're almost at max.
Nice.
So I think I have 61 spots. So there, there are some, some Saturdays that I overbook by a couple. Figuring somebody's going to be sick or, so. And, uh, the new brick walkways that we put in last year have changed the flow of the traffic, foot traffic around the market. It's been a great help. Um, I get a lot of comments from local people, people from out of town on the aesthetics and how nice it looks. They like that it's appealing coming across from the parking lot. Um, so, you know, wanted to say again, great job from the crew. They did a great job putting that stuff in. They did it without interrupting any of the markets. Um, and just want to wish, uh, to thank the town of Abingdon for its continued support. It's a pleasure to have such a great working relationship that benefits the town of Abingdon, our vendors and other local businesses. And that's it.
David, first, first and foremost, I want to thank you for everything that you're doing at the, the farmer's market for the town of Abingdon. You've seen nothing but increases, all the compliments that I'm getting, and that is going to you and to all the vendors that are out there at the farmer's market on Tuesday and on Saturday. And the work that was done with the bricks, that's Public Works here in the town. Public Works is doing a great job here for the town of Abingdon, keeping everything looking nice and bright. So thank you. And just to let you know, if there's anything that the town council or the town manager can do for the Abingdon Farmers Market, please don't hesitate to come to us and ask us because we know it's for a good cause. We can see that right now, that your work and your effort and everyone else's effort at the farmer's market really stands out. So we really appreciate that.
Hey, appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we have no old business today, no miscellaneous business. And well, we'll go now with miscellaneous business and communications from our town manager. I do that every time.
That's okay.
I do that every time.
Well, first, 17 years is a long time. And, and sometimes it's from the time you birth, the time you go to high school, or in this case.
Thanks.
It's 17 years. 17 years is, uh, it's Kim's anniversary with, with the town. So she's been with us for 17 years now.
Happy anniversary.
And, uh, happy anniversary. So, uh, she's just getting the hang of it. So, uh, anyway, uh, she doesn't.
Might take me 17 to get the hang of this, Ken.
Another 17.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, pretty soon she'll get it straight. No, no, she does an awesome job for us and I just wanted to recognize that. And then, uh, the, the playground at the Coombs, the demolition starts this week for the wooden, uh, stuff that's coming down. And then September 9th through the 14th, the banner's up on, on Cummins Street right now. Uh, but September 9th through the 14th, we're working on getting community build folks to, to help participate with that. And, uh, and so if you have, like, some job, some employers allow people to, uh, use community service hours. Uh, if anybody who's got any kind of skills, uh, would be greatly appreciated, but September 9th through the 14th. And then, um, the, the traffic with the school, uh, I've been going out to the construction every morning, uh, looking at the, uh, the sewer work. Uh, and it's, they're, they're plowing straightforward. It's been a very technical, uh, thing for them. But the community's been very good with traffic so far. We've been adjusting based on what we're seeing. Um, like I said, Thursday, everybody left early for school, so they got there pretty good. And then Friday, everybody adjusted for it being so smooth on Thursday, and then it was backed up a little bit. Um, but this morning, it seemed to flow pretty good. And the, the chiefs and, um, public works are all coordinating on, to get the traffic in and out. And, uh, so it seems to be working pretty good for us. And then, uh, yeah, on the Highlands Festival, uh, thanks Greg for pointing that stuff out. It's, uh, it really is a, is a community effort. There's a lot of different participants in making that happen. And unfortunately, I did not get to see the balloon, uh, lighting up this year. I heard it was awesome. Um, saw pictures and, uh, unfortunately, I was in a place that wasn't nearly as picturesque. Um, but, uh, yeah, it really did appear to be beautiful.
I think we had a big crowd out there. I had to work that night, but my wife and family went there and several people told me that that was one of the biggest crowds that they had seen. And, you know, I think that with doing that over at the Meadows, that really like showcased the Meadows as well, too. So I think that was a really good job that.
Yeah, cool.
The fest won the.
Yeah, because I got lots of pictures. I mean, and we wanted it up, up there for a lot of logistical reasons, but you also got the splashback in case it was hot. Gives kids something to do. There's plenty of power hookups there and ample parking and all. So, uh, it's just unfortunate it was windy the next day. But I think from, uh, from all the feedback I've gotten, it was a really neat event. But, yeah, the folks in the Highlands Festival, it's just such a, uh, uh, there's so many different, uh, so many different things they all do at once simultaneously.
Plus, the weather was perfect.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, no, we, we certainly, uh, certainly lucked out on that one. And then, uh, one of the things, uh, with the, uh, the Creeper Trail situation, and they're still working the top end of the trail. Um, you know, what we have done as the town and the next council meeting, I'll have tourism providing a, a report on some of the, what we do behind the scenes to help support the tourism in the town. But then I can tell you from, uh, looking at our, uh, the, the, the visitor accounts that we're getting, uh, our, our accounts are still very, very solid. Because one of the things tourism does is they very specifically, uh, push out advertisements and, and marketing to folks out in the, in the community, but also areas around the, the region where we know our customers are at. And it really seems to have worked well for us thus far, uh, because our visitor accounts are definitely still up there. It's just kind of, it's odd how, uh, the, if you had told me a year ago, oh, the top half won't be there, I'd have been like, you know, that's crazy. Uh, and here we are, almost, uh, you know, almost a year coming up on it. So, um, anyway, it just, it's really worked. But next, next month, I'll have a, a report from tourism explaining some of the things that they do in order to help make sure that our businesses continue to thrive. And, uh, like Saturday, I was here in town and my goodness, there's a lot of people out in town. Um, so it's good. And then also, I understand the, the Frozen. Yeah, apparently my wife, she goes to all the plays and she's like, it was excellent, best one she's ever seen. She loved it. So, uh, I thought it was pretty neat. It's neat to see, uh, plays being that successful here in town. So, but that said, uh, if the, if the, uh, residents can just bear with us for another week or two until they get there.
That's what I was going to ask you. What, what are you thinking in timeline?
Well, they've about, they got about 850 feet left and they're doing about 52 feet a day. And they got about six manholes, uh, left to do. But they're now down to less than eight feet in depth. So it, when I was there this morning, they're cruising right along, but all it takes is an air, gas line or water line. And, and as it is, they're pumping about 75 gallons a minute because of the groundwater coming into it. So they still got a little bit. But the whole goal is to get it open and then we can go in and pave on a weekend night or something like that, don't really get the stuff. We just want to get the traffic flowing. So. I do appreciate everybody's patience, uh, with that. And Pub, Public Works, Police and Fire helping out with that.
That's one thing I was going to say. I've been out there, uh, my kids, well, we go to Watauga. God bless, we're not in the mess. But, uh, uh, my business is right across the street and I've been seeing the fire department and the police department out there Thursday, Friday. And as Monday as well, too. So thank you all for your all's time and your effort to, to see that the traffic flows smoothly. I don't think we've been had, I don't think we've had any problems with any road rage or anything like that, have we?
I told, I told Chief Estes it was, when I took, of course, we were late. We weren't early going to school. We weren't late, but we weren't early. And, um, that might be the fastest I've ever gotten to the high school, taking a kid. So it, it was working. It was working and, and it went really smoothly. So I, that was, uh, I wanted to say that I appreciated all of you. And then we also saw them directing traffic when the balloon event let out. And then there was one day a couple of weeks ago that it seemed like every five minutes, there were, there was a wreck on Valley Street or Main Street. So I know they, and then, then the national night out.
Yeah.
There, you all, we're all up there again. So I know that our, um, staff has been working really, really hard the past few weeks because they're everywhere I look. So thank you all for everything you do for us.
All right. With that being said, we'll move to council reports. And we'll start with Councilman, uh, Derek Webb first.
Um, I won't bore y'all with a, a bunch of detail, but I did get the opportunity to volunteer, um, at the Highlands Festival during the antique, uh, show. And, uh, with cross-country team, no less. Fantastic vendors. Um, there were a couple of them there that I think it was their 17th year, 17th or 18th year? Yeah, I, the, uh, the parallel is, is strong. Uh, but, uh, but yeah, a lot of repeat vendors. Um, obviously, they're doing very well at the festival. Also got the opportunity to go to the hot air balloon, um, festivities. I don't know if anybody got a head count, but there had to be four or 500 people out there or more. Um, but the food trucks were backed up tremendously. If anybody's got a food truck that wants to be there, um, next time around. It was, uh, it was very, very popular and a great event. it was, it was very, very popular and a great event. So, yeah, just kudos to the Highlands Festival for what they did for the town. That was great.
I'd just like to echo everything that was said about the festival. It truly was awesome, especially Saturday night. It was over the top. It was perfect. Everything was perfect.
Amanda?
I'll just echo what I said before, but also, I think we need to wish Derek Webb, Councilman Webb, a happy birthday.
I don't know what you're talking about.
I can't believe you're spending your birthday here with us.
I know. I mean, it's no place I'd rather be, right?
Just as everyone said, I want to echo on everything. Thank you all to the town community, Public Works, the police, and the fire for everything that they've done the past couple of weeks with the Highlands Festival going on. Vice Mayor Wayne Austin couldn't be here today. He's had surgery, so everyone, please say a little prayer for Vice Mayor Wayne Austin. I got to speak to him today. He's recovering very well, seems to be in high spirits. And he said that he's gotten out, like, I think Saturday and Sunday got out a little bit, and he's looking forward to being here for our next town council meeting. And with that being said, we will move on to appointments to boards and committees. And we have one position open under the tree commission, and that is appointment to fill the vacancy of Mohammed Haslam, who recently resigned. I don't know if we need to go into closed session about this, Kim.
There was only one applicant that I saw.
We only have one applicant for that. Is this, I don't think we need to go into closed session for that, do you, Kim? Has everyone had a chance to look over the applicant? Seems to be a very promising person to me. Would anybody like to make a motion that we...
Sure. I'll make a motion to nominate Jack Barnes, or appoint Jack Barnes to the vacant seat on the tree commission.
Any further discussion? Kim, if you'll please call roll.
Mr. Webb.
Aye.
Ms. Quetch?
Aye.
Ms. Pillian?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
The town arborist has been very busy on Valley Street.
I'll think, Kevin.
The growth.
Kevin's always busy. And with that being said, I'll call this meeting adjourned.